Good evening. It's now 6 o'clock, October 16th. I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order and ask you all to please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first order of business is approval of the minutes from October 2nd and October 9th.
Is that what you're trying to give?
Yeah.
Joan just gave me.
So, an entertaining motion to approve October 2nd.
So moved.
Second?
Motion made, second. Any discussion on? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, entertaining motion to approve October 9th.
That was absent.
So...
So moved.
I will second. Motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
So those are all set. Next order of business of approval of warrants. I'll entertain a motion to approve school warrant number 1017 for $65,729.89. General warrant 1018 for $410,315.92. Payroll warrant number 8 for $399,185.79.
So moved. Second?
Motion made, second. Any need for discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving along to financial items. The treasurer is here for Medicare renewal. Yeah?
Do you have a...
Yeah, please.
Okay, that's fine. I'll read the letter. I just got it to you this morning. The Insurance Advisory Committee met on Monday, October 15th, to review the renewal proposal for the town's Medicare supplement plans. There are no structural changes to the current plans, other than what is mandated by Medicare. The increase averages 1.61% for a cost of approximately $4,000 and can be absorbed in the current group health insurance budget. The Insurance Advisory Committee respectfully requests the board's approval to renew our Medicare contracts with Blue Cross and Blue Shield and the Fallon Senior Plan.
All right. Do we need to execute a document or just vote to approve?
No, it's just, it's our recommendation and then I actually let the insurance companies know. There's nothing for you to sign.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Entertaining motion that we approve their recommendation.
So moved. Second?
Motion made, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next is a donation for townhouse painting. We received another donation from William Peluso and Carol Karen Peluso on Hillside Ave towards the townhouse painting. Guess I'd entertain a motion that we accept that donation?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion necessary?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you to the Pelusos. Head-in parking on North Common Street. Is that what you're here for, Jason?
Yeah.
All right. So what was the...
Our last meeting, it was brought about that there was some interest from various parties for head-on parking, as you put it.
Yeah, the playground committee wants to do head-in parking.
Yes. And whether that's head-in or diagonal, whatever, to be determined perhaps. But I think the main question was, do we want it paved? So I polled a few people in that area and I had no negative response to pavement. So I think the project has the money to do it. And I think we're still open to the idea of discussion about this. And I think there's still time because it's not going to happen until next year. Time does not prevail. The fact is, the contractor's coming back to finish up next year and it can all be coordinated at that time.
Yeah, and I heard from the playground committee and they were concerned. At one point, we were talking about just gravel.
Right.
And they thought that their mowers might pick that stuff up and damage some mowers and stuff, so they were pushing for the pavement. But if there's no objection, that's good.
Well, the thing with gravel is that if you don't maintain it, it's going to grow grass in it.
Yeah.
So I think the pavement thing personally would be a one-shot.
Yeah.
Be there longer than the gravel would last because if it's not maintained...
Yes.
It would turn to grass again.
It would create roughly 20 to 23 parking spaces if it's in head-on. It's not parallel, it's head-on or diagonal.
Yep.
So...
All right, we'll work towards that then for next year.
Okay, through the... Chris?
Yeah, to see if... We're not sure if the money can be used for that purpose. He was going to check into that. Is that the email we got? Did you read the email?
Right, but we were going to use Chapter 90 money for the final...
Oh, for the matching, yeah.
For the paving anyway, so maybe we...
And that money may become free because the project costs have been way down.
Yeah, that's what he was saying. We had extra money, so we might...
Nice.
So we'll look into it with a goal of trying to pave that.
Pave it, yeah. Okay, great.
Perfect.
Great. I'm sure there'll be updates right along.
Can they excavate it this year or no?
I think...
No time?
I think the idea is to get it so it's kind of the way it was, so it can still be used as parking, but it won't be, you know, picture perfect as it will be paved. So...
All right.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
All right, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business. We have a request for change of manager for the American Legion liquor license.
Tim Nason's here.
Tim?
What can I say? They just want me to do it.
They want you to do it?
And I said, "Sure."
You're the man for the job?
Yeah, it was good.
Yeah, I think we have a whole package here full of stuff. I guess it's all completed, right? Did you check it all out?
Looks like it. Yeah, there's a checklist in there and it looks like they've got everything.
All right. Got any questions?
What does this do for you?
Nothing.
Makes you the manager?
Yeah, and that's nothing. There's no pay. I mean, I've been temporary finance officer for 15 years.
Yeah.
So you used to no pay this?
Yeah.
So who is the manager?
Mike Maxon, but he transferred out. He's moving, so...
Okay.
And I'm not going anywhere, I don't think.
And you know what to do?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah. Been there a while.
Yeah, so let's see, some opposition somewhere. I'd entertain a motion that we sign the documents.
Don't see anybody jumping up saying no.
Wait a second.
Well, if you say no, you've got to take over. Great.
So moved. Second?
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
So it's all of us.
You're the manager.
That doesn't mean... It's like being married. You might be the manager, but you're not the boss. Just a name on a piece of paper.
All right.
Thank you. I have to go to a free steak supper.
I'll send it to Boston tomorrow and then they'll probably call you and do an investigation and stuff.
Okay, that's fine.
It goes to the alcohol commission with all this documentation. It's just that one signature page, right?
Yep, yep. And then I'll send it to Boston and then Boston reviews it and they have control over it.
We have a contract for cultural council funds. That's something we do every year?
Yep.
I didn't know Eric was still in the chair.
Yeah, they're a little behind in times, I think. So it's $4,900 for July of 2018 through June of 2019?
Yep.
And that's what we're paying them for their services?
No, no, that's what they're...
They're giving us?
The state's giving Northbrook Field to distribute to events. The local cultural council, you know, sponsors events or whatever. If it's a school or at the library or...
All right.
So we're getting money.
Free money.
Right, we're just accepting it.
Okay, well, entertain a motion to accept and sign the documents.
So moved. Second?
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion necessary? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's see. The next is a review of the articles for the warrant for November 9th. So Article 1 is a transfer... Oh, unpaid bills, that's for the UMass medical...
Medicaid.
The money that we get for the school, so...
Reimbursement, right. The money actually goes to the town, not the school.
But does it really?
Medicaid reimbursement, yep.
But it's based on the school...
Services.
Services, all right. So we've started paying that last year, so we need to take $1,100 for that. Water retained earnings is Article 2. That's from the water department. That doesn't affect the general budget. Article 3 is for sewer retained. That doesn't affect the general budget. $3,015 from assessors, two assessors, that's a transfer.
Yep.
That's not going to affect anything. Article 5, that's a cemetery transfer. Let's see, I'll have to rescind. So we're rescinding money from group insurance?
And appropriating it from free cash instead. That's where we balance the budget.
Oh, okay. So that's the money to balance?
Right.
Roughly $130,000.
Nancy would feel better if we used $140, just in case they have to change anything when the tax rate paperwork goes in.
Okay.
So if we used $140, she'd be happy.
All right, I'll update that spreadsheet. 7 is to put money into stabilization, so we'll... I think I have that at $125 temporarily right now, but we'll see where all the other money comes out.
We had $100, I think.
I had $100 allegedly and I put $125 in there because we had a huge balance, but we'll see where it comes out.
Yep.
With all the other things we have to fund. Article 8 is money into capital improvement, the stabilization account for capital stuff. And we bled off a whole bunch of that last year. We put $100 in and we took about 75 back out for things that we really needed, so I have that temporarily at $175. Replenish the 75 and then put in another $100, bring us up where we should be after two years. See if the town will transfer $33,000 to veterans' benefits. The veterans... I guess she's run into a couple of expenses with veterans, so we need to fund that account through the end of June. And then we get reimbursed for it, so we get 75% of it back anyway.
Yep.
We just have to get her through June. $600 for senior center laptop. $850 to the accountant's salary account. That's the new accountant. And with the contract that we signed with the new accountant, we need to get $850 to pay that. $4,100 into the accountant training salary. We funded that with some.
Right.
But I don't think it was enough.
It's not enough to pay... This is to pay Nancy.
And she stayed on for us to train this guy after she planned to retire, so we're going to fund that. Then Board of Health clerks... Oh, the Board of Health wants $4,000 for the clerk's salary account, and it's not an increase in pay.
Nope.
It's an increase in hours.
Right.
So they're looking to stay open more hours to handle the people coming in, so...
Sure. Trevor said that they've lost grant money because there's nobody there to...
Right, to write the grants.
...write the grants. Time-wise, so Trevor's going to try to step up and get some grant money. They've missed a few thousand dollars.
So that'll pay for itself, probably.
Yep.
Transfer $8,000 to the landfill repair account to fix that swale so we can get the DEP to certify the dump and, you know, should we want to put solar on that parcel, we need it certified, so that's going to take care of that. Article 15 and 16, we're taking out. We were originally thinking of paying off the highway truck lease and the cruiser lease. The savings we'll see by paying those off early is minimal and it's a lot of money. It's almost $100,000 between the two of them. So the Finance Committee suggested that we just fund them through the year like we've been funding them and use the money elsewhere. So those will be taken out. Article 17 is $10,000 for the fire department roof repair. So there's a leak in the roof and the water's coming in. That siren that's on the top is way too heavy and Joey thinks it's going to collapse through the roof, which is probably not a good thing. So for $10,000, we're going to have a rubber membrane put on, we're going to take the horn down, and we're going to get a lift that's necessary to do that. And we're going to get the lift for a month and see if we can't paint the top of the townhouse with the lift while we have it. So that's the plan with that. $2,500 for some vehicle repairs for the fire department. And then we're suggesting $40,000 to the fire department new building account. They're trying to get plans done for the new fire department building, which would be located next to the police station on the Grove Street side. And we need plans and architectural renderings and drawings because the state is holding $2 million earmarked for that and we need to show that we're investing in it. So Senator Gobi suggested we appropriate some money for that, so we're going to try to get $40,000 appropriated for that. Then there's water retained earnings. They need a water truck. That's not going to affect the general budget at all. Water retained earnings again for their assistant salary account. 23 is another water retained earnings. 22 is water retained earnings, 23 is sewer retained earnings for transfers within the sewer and water departments. That doesn't affect the general budget. Some of the things that aren't on here that need to get on here is $15,000 for technology expenses. We need some final work on connecting water, sewer, and the town collector, so we need $15,000 to complete that. We're seeking to increase the town clerk salary and our administrative assistant salary and the treasurer's salary. They're all way below surrounding towns. And over the last couple of months, we've become abundantly aware of how much work our administrative assistant does. She hasn't been around for us, so our eyes have been open. We're asking for your support on that. The selectman's salary, we zero-funded the selectman's salaries, so we're looking to fund that. And the last thing is beaver eradication. Had some problems with beavers around town. I think years ago, it was under the Board of Health. So the Finance Committee has requested money for their beaver eradication program. They're suggesting $6,000.
It was actually under the selectman.
Was it under the selectman?
Yeah.
Oh, because I couldn't find a line item anywhere on any of our things.
Under the selectman, yeah.
Just in our discretionary stuff somewhere?
Nope.
Was there a line item?
Yep. Yeah, probably three years ago, maybe four years ago.
Really? So I looked in the town reports and I didn't see any specific line item for it, but...
Yeah, I'll have to look.
So...
I know we did, definitely.
We're looking to put that back because beavers are a problem around and we need to stem that issue. And there's some supporting documentation for you to look at if you so desire.
Are we rewriting that beaver policy that we had so that what happened before to...
Yeah.
Or to go to the Board of Health and they go to...
Did I do...
You know what I mean? Are we going to do something with that or...
Well, they should go to the highway superintendent first and then you get the...
Right, but the people don't know what...
The permit comes from the Board of Health, yeah.
We need to actually get something so people can... This is what we need to do first, instead of just doing it on their own.
Yeah.
We should write something out.
Yeah.
Even if it's not a full-written policy, a guide, I guess you would call it, of how to eradicate your beaver properly.
And learn how to cook them.
So that's a review of the articles that we're looking for. The special town meeting is November 9th, 7? 7:30? What do we put for...
7.
7?
Right.
7 o'clock, November 9th, so Friday night, for money items. Next order of business is town committees. Joan and I talked about this last Tuesday when it was brought to our attention. We had a meeting with the Eastbrook Field Selectmen over areas that we can work together and resolve some issues. We talked about the town beach and some committees. They're having a problem filling some committees. We're having a problem filling some committees, so we were thinking if maybe we got joint committees between the two towns to handle issues of mutual interest, like the beach. We could start working towards cooperative things. We talked about having our highway superintendent and Eastbrook Field Highway Superintendent address the washout of the beach.
Mm-hmm.
So... But in that discussion, we talked about the 200th anniversary committee, which is now six years past its anniversary function.
Yep.
In each year since I've been here, we talk about dissolving it and they keep saying, "Oh, we have money we want to spend," but it's time, I think, that... They haven't done anything. They haven't had any meetings, as far as I know.
Nope.
So I would be interested in dissolving that committee.
Do you know how much is in their account? Can it be donated somewhere to the town?
What they plan to do is there was a quilt made for it and they want a case made to hang it up in the town offices. And Sheila's been supposed to ask Jim Caldwell if he would do it, and I don't know that she's asked him yet how much, you know, how much it would be to do that. But I think there's around $4,000 in there.
But that committee, that money is for the town, right? The general budget for the town? They don't have separate...
No, it's in their account, yeah. It's in their account.
Who's the charge of that account? It's like Northbrook Field helps, right? That comes through the town.
Right.
All that money comes through the town.
Right. Right. I don't remember if that was donations or if that was town taxpayer money either that's in the account. I'll have to ask Nancy.
Yeah. Well, I would be interested in dissolving the committee and whatever money is there, seeking it back for the town. And then if they want to do something like that, then they can approach us for...
Yep.
...an appropriation on it. I think we support... I can't imagine it being $4,000.
Caldwell will do very well building a cabinet for $4,000.
Oh, I don't think he would charge that much.
No, I know.
I think they just have...
I'm just saying.
They haven't gotten...
Yeah.
They haven't asked him yet.
Well, he'll probably know by morning.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
Posting on Facebook as we speak.
Right.
Yeah, so I'll make the motion that we dissolve the committee.
Second?
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion on that?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So maybe we should send them a letter of thanks for their efforts six years ago? All right. Next order of business is a letter from Sue Lyons. Anybody want to read that? Can we read that, Jason? There you go.
To the Northbrook Field Board of Selectmen, from Susan Lyons, in regards to our first responders. Dear Board of Selectmen, on Sunday, October 7th, 2018, I had a life-threatening fall from an aluminum ladder while scraping paint from my front porch. The two legs of the ladder collapsed and bent, causing me to fall approximately five feet to the ground, hitting the back of my head on the cement area supporting my porch posts that go from the roof to the ground. I was bleeding profusely and being on blood thinners, time was of the essence. I was also alone at the time of the accident. The reason I am alive today to write this letter is twofold. One, amazingly, I did not lose consciousness and bleed to death. Two, the quick and excellent response from our first responders. I cannot say enough about our Northbrook Field Police Department's own, Dave Churchy, who was the first on the scene, and our fire chief, Joe Hallway, right behind him. Churchy began immediately to place pressure on my wound to try to control the bleeding. The rest of our amazing Northbrook Field EMT team and our chief as well as others arrived within minutes as well. I also have to give kudos to our dispatch, who kept me on the phone and calm while waiting for the arrival of help. Our police, fire, and EMTs go about their business mostly unnoticed, and until you really need them, you find out very quickly how fortunate we are to have the group in this town that we have. They are professional, caring, and all business when they respond. I nearly got a helicopter ride to UMass trauma, but in the end, didn't need it. Our fire chief had them seven minutes from our soccer field in case I did. I can tell you all that when contracts come up, that when they need equipment or anything they need, we should... We would always be wise to find the funds and do whatever we can to help them so they can continue to save lives like they did mine. I thank them all from the bottom of my heart. If I forgot someone failed to mention you, I apologize. I promise no more ladders, chainsaws, or anything else like that. Again, for me, folks never do work like that unless someone else is also at home in case things go horribly wrong like they did with me. Thank you again to our Northbrook Field emergency team. You are the best. Very truly yours, Sue Lyons.
So, thanks, Sue, and our wishes for a speedy recovery. And we miss you at the meeting, so hurry back.
She's doing pretty good. I've talked to her since.
Yeah, I sent her a couple of messages, but...
She's on the mend.
That's good. All right. Public comment period. Yes, sir?
You can stand up?
Yeah, please. People at home can't hear very well.
First thing I'd like to say, Jeff Smith, 45 Walnut Streets. On two occasions this summer, I emailed the highway department about illegally dumped trash on Heinz Bridge Road, and within a week, the town had responded and cleaned it up, so I just want to commend them for what they did.
Thank you.
Appreciate it because it looks pretty bad when you've got a couch and a chair sitting on the side of the road.
Yeah, and we got that new bi-ler. If we could have a find-out, we can find it, but...
Would be nice.
Yeah.
Okay, another thing, I have a question, which you alluded to earlier, was the Board of Health and the $8,000 are looking forward to finish the swale at the dump for landfill?
Yep.
Assuming that that is passed, would there be a timeline? Because I had brought a question up maybe in May about how they were doing, and now it's October. Just kind of curious.
You mean the dump getting approval?
Well, the DEP passing...
Yeah. From what I understand from Trevor, the DEP's been to the site. He did some work by hand, but there's a plan, and that's why he needs $8,000. And once he gets the $8,000, he can implement the plan, and I guess DEP's ready to sign off, so I'm thinking it's going to be quickly, according to Trevor.
Okay. Now, is the DEP the organization that would look at the landfill and see if it was eligible for solar panels?
They will certify that it is.
Is or isn't?
Right.
They're the ones to make the decision.
Yeah, and it's the... All the deficiencies with the dump that made it not usable for solar. Once we fix the deficiencies and the DEP certifies that it's fixed, then we should be able to use it for solar.
Okay. So finally, rumors. What's going on? What's going on with MeLink? I'm hearing things.
I haven't heard anything from them in months. Although he did just send an email about coming out.
Right. They went to the school today or tomorrow. They went to the school and they're in town looking at the sites.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. First I've heard in months. So they haven't contacted us at all.
I had heard that they had sold the leasing to another company. That's a rumor that's going around.
Yeah. Not that's come to us.
Okay.
Yeah. Jeremy Chapman from MeLink is the one that sent the email. So I think MeLink is still involved so far.
And one final thing. The Brickyard Road property, which you have designated for solar panels, I think it would be a great appendage for the rail trail. There's a loop trail or a single-track bicycle trail through there. So just something for you to think about because it's right there.
And does it touch... does it touch the track at all?
Yeah.
The trail? Does?
Yeah.
Those are something to consider.
Sure. I think so.
I'd rather see a rail or part of the rail trail in there than solar panels.
I think it would...
That's my own opinion.
We'd have to cut trees.
Well, you know, not necessarily. Because I do trail work for the Squab and Land Trust. You don't have to cut a lot.
Yeah. So that's a great idea, actually. Very good.
Well, we've got the town park now with recreation down there on the Westbrook Field Road. They're putting in frisbee golf.
Yep.
So it'd be cool if we could get something on the other end going down the rail trail. You could access it from the trail.
Yeah.
Walking path, bike path.
It's a nice area.
Sure.
Yeah. We're going to take care of the beavers down there, too, because I think there's quite a bit of damage. I know the Highway Department's spending quite a bit of money on that Brickyard Road parcel to fix beaver problems. So if we get rid of the beavers in there, I think it'll make that area much better. Won't be swamp anymore.
Not as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, it's for the rail trail, expanding into there.
Thank you guys.
Yes, sir.
A simple beaver question. Does that have to go by the Conservation Commission? See what they have to say about it?
Yeah. So if we eradicate beavers, we need to get a permit from Conservation. Yep.
I believe there's a certain period of time, too. You can't do it during breeding season and that kind of thing. So there's a window.
Yeah. We hire a professional trapper who pulls the permits and gets the permissions and stuff like that. So, yes. Yep. Anything else? Yes, sir.
My name's Doug Powers. The reason I'm here tonight is I sent a letter to the Selectmen over a month ago requesting executive session. And I've not heard back in over a month. And I'm just here to see if we can establish a date where an executive session can be held.
Yeah. I'm not inclined to give an executive session for the reasons you asked. There's a process that's established by statute for you to file your grievance. So that's a process that you should follow. It's an appeal to the ZBA and then court action. The Board of Selectmen don't have any true powers over that, so...
Well, who hires the zoning enforcement officer and the building inspector in town?
We appoint them.
They're paid by the town, however.
They're paid by the town.
Right.
Yep.
So it really comes through the Selectmen?
Well, it really doesn't because it's statutorily defined that if you ask for zoning enforcement, right? That's your complaint. You asked him to enforce zoning laws.
Correct.
He's declined to enforce the zoning laws. And by statute, the proper venue is an appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So that's your recourse.
So is that something that you could have told me a month ago?
I probably could have. Like I said, our administrative assistant has been out. So some things have fallen by the wayside.
A phone call? You know, nothing formal. It's the phone call.
Yeah.
Little civility to... You know, I spent some time putting that together. I also put in there, however, something that's outside of the zoning board's authority that you're claiming they have the authority to do regarding, from the standpoint of the building inspector. And who would I approach for that? All right. What's two points in that letter?
Well, we'll go back and review the letter and we'll respond by letter. How's that? I'll talk to the other Selectmen and we'll...
Okay.
Decide whether we're going to do it or not.
If you decide you're not going to do it, can you also point me in the right direction in terms of who the right people should be and exactly what the process is you're describing? Because I'm unaware of the process. So I'd appreciate getting some input from you.
Yeah. I can direct you to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 8 through 15.
Could you just put that in the letter back to me then, please?
Sure. I can. You'll have it within a week. How's that?
That sounds great.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So $500,000 that Green Gold is giving to the town?
Sure.
That's yearly for hopefully five years, right? Or longer?
It's... So the law says that we get up to 3% of their gross revenue for the purposes of proven infrastructure needs. We contacted the police and the fire, and $300,000 was what we got from the infrastructure needs. We need more police help, so we need fire. So my thought process was giving them a decent number, hoping that instead of just for five years, because that's the cap, five years, that by being reasonable with our expenses, that they would go longer. So instead of just getting it for five years, they've committed to us that they'll go out longer than five years. They want to be good neighbors, so... So $200,000 of that money each year is, call it discretionary money, that's going to be appropriated to needs around the town based on a small board that will decide where it goes. One member from Green Gold and a couple of representatives from the town, the Police Chief, and one member of the Select Board.
That's what I wanted to know, yeah. How you were going to allocate the remaining money.
Yeah. It's going to be requests from the town, different needs, like the town park, Town Common, things like that. And then that board will decide what projects get funded.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Will that go into general fund or will that be allocated into its own account? So that it's... We can see that it's allocated for this or when it comes time for whatever you need it for?
Yeah. I don't think it'll be part of the general fund, but it'll be accounted for. Right? We'll show it separately as to where it goes to. And, you know, Green Gold wants to be a good neighbor. So there are a number of things that they're going to want their name on to show the town that they're being a good neighbor. So that's our hope, is working together for the long term instead of just taking what we can get for five years. So...
So that's $500,000 every year for five years, the way it sits now?
Right. $300,000 goes to police and fire.
I thought it was two. And then we get three. It's opposite?
It's opposite. 200 to the police, 100 to the fire, and 200 to...
For us?
Us, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. That's the plan.
Now, how far along are they? And when... I guess my question on that... So that's allocated every year for five years, right?
Mm-hmm.
So where does that 3% that Jim talked about at the meeting at the police station come into play? I might have missed that at the beginning.
The 3%?
Don't we get 3% from them?
No.
From their profit?
No. We get...
Okay. So that's where I think the confusion is with a lot of people.
Yeah. Maybe you missed the key words in the contracts or in the statute that authorizes. It says up to 3% of their gross revenue based on a showing of infrastructure need. So you go to them and you say, "This is what we need." And they can say yes or no. And then there's a whole process that you can go to the Cannabis Control Commission and kind of prove what your infrastructure needs are. And you get into that. But then that tends to get adversarial loss against them and...
But he was... It sounded to me at that meeting that Jim was more than willing to go for the 3%. That's the most you can get, right?
Yeah. The most you could get is 3%. But if... Now, for example, Charlton has done that because they're in Charlton.
Yep.
And they are really not pleased with Charlton. So they're starting to fight back on certain issues. Every time they turn around, Charlton was coming back to them for more. "Oh, we have more infrastructure needs." So they're only going to pay Charlton. But that... And that's a dispensary. So that comes under a different section. So they truly get the 3%.
3%, okay. I think that's where a lot of the confusion is.
Yeah. We're not a dispensary.
Guess we're just a cultivation here? We're not the dispensary? No. I think actually that dispensaries seem to gain more than what we're going to gain.
Yeah. And that's by design.
Because it's based on the sales.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah. And our concern when that first came out was that as a cultivation center, we would be totally cut out of any money.
Right.
And then they allowed for the cultivation centers to get some money, but up to five years. And who knows? The law may change because originally host community agreements were permitted. And all of those were thrown out because the Cannabis Control said they shouldn't have host community agreements. But then they wrote it back in to this law. So we were... For a while there, we were kind of nervous that we were going to not see anything out of this.
Yeah.
It looks like we're going to see 3%. They are growing over there. Things are moving along. They haven't sold anything yet. So... And that's the other thing. They have to start selling because we get 3% of their gross revenue. If they don't have any revenue yet, they're not...
And I think that's a lot of the confusion. People here in town, "Oh, we got 500 grand from, you know, Green Gold." You know? So it's like, you know, what are we going to do with it? You know? They don't... I don't think they realize that the infrastructure thing and then it's discretionary is for you guys what the remainder will be. But I don't think that the people also know or that it's only for five years.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, it's unfortunate. It'd be great to have them maybe reach out and, like you said, extend it. That would be wonderful.
So far, Jim and their... Green Gold's CEO, President, the one that... Is it Michael?
Michael Norman.
Yeah, Michael.
Yeah. He passed away.
He did?
Passed away very rapidly.
Wow.
Some fast-moving pancreatic cancer or something like that. And a new person has stepped up into that position. And he's the one that told Jim, "Why are we dealing with Charlton when Northbrook Field's being so good to us?" So that kind of led to the... No opposition whatsoever. There was no, "We're throwing out 500,000." And they tried to say 400 or 350. They accepted it with the intention of dragging it out or prolonging it more than the five years. So that's what we're operating under right now. We're hoping they keep their word. I don't see any reason why not because Jim's been pretty good to deal with, so... So that's the plan.
Those are kind of my questions.
All right. Anything else?
I think, you know, with town parks, like it's such a rumor. People, you don't know unless you actually get...
Yeah. Come to the Selectmen's meeting.
I mean, we heard that the leases were sold for, you know... MeLink was defunct. It was sold. The leases are sold. And, you know, it's just... You have to get the facts before you start throwing stuff out there.
Yeah. I mean, we haven't heard from them in a long time.
Now, can you clarify to me? I know you and I talked about this, but how if you... We lost, what, maybe 29% with Bell Hill and Oakham Road, right?
Mm-hmm.
So with the other properties, if you say you were going to use those properties and possibly if we get certified at the landfill, that'll take up some of the 29% that you lost at the other two locations.
Well, we can't do the landfill under this contract. We have to do a new RFP for the landfill. They made that clear to us.
Okay. So there's a stumbling block. And would... So when you RFP it, everybody gets to bid on it?
Right.
Would MeLink, because they have so much time and money invested, would they still be willing to do that?
I don't know. But there are a lot...
I guess my other question is, how do you arrive at a lease for properties that you aren't really sure about? As the Board of Selectmen? For these leases for those people, for the company?
I don't understand. I don't understand your question.
So we're going to lease, say, Brickyard Road, possibly the landfill, to these companies. How do you arrive at a number for those leases?
It's usually, like any real estate transaction, there's industry standards and there's comps and stuff like that. So we go out and get the comps of what leases are getting.
And the developers made the proposals.
Yeah. And it's based on acreage and how many megawatts they're going to fit on a certain spot and things like that. And then we get the pilot tax, which for Northbrook Field's already been negotiated. It's $15,000 per megawatt for the tax that they pay in lieu of property taxes and... Well, personal property, I guess it is. Because the real estate tax still gets paid as a real estate tax. So that's how we come out to what...
To what you get for it.
Yeah. It's like a private... It's similar to the private. I mean, land is... gets what it gets, whether it's in municipal ownership or... In the leases themselves, we have to go to the town to get the lease... Permission for the lease. It's a municipal... I keep forgetting that term. The Municipal Modernization Act says that... It used to be we needed it. We didn't need it. They give it to us at the beginning of the year that the Selectmen can enter into these leases. leases, and now, under the Modernization Act, you have to go to the town for specific leases every time.
Okay.
Brandon?
Well, now it's brought up. I'd like to piggyback on this gentleman's idea, the Brickyard Road property, because I've been thinking of that myself. You know, that borders on Walcott Pond there, which is a historic pond, which had Walcott Mill there.
Is that the beaver dam?
No, that's a
The different pond?
It's a pond that butts East Brookfield, partially in East Brookfield, partially in North Brookfield. And you can actually see it from East Brookfield Road, especially with no leaves on the trees, and the dam is still there. The original dam's just been breached to allow the water to come through, you know? But, so, you know, it's a historic pond. It's really part of the first resettlement of Brookfield after King Philip's War, and it's also the first part of the settlement of North Brookfield, first part of North Brookfield. So I think that'd be a good tie-in with the rail trail also. Even, even if you do the solar lease, I think there's plenty of room in there, and considering, you know, the way lands and everything, there's plenty of room for a buffer to incorporate that rail trail in there in some fashion to maybe make use of that pond for some purpose. I don't know if it's really how big it is. I haven't physically seen it, but it might be big enough for like canoeing or something. Who knows? But I think that's a good, a good idea, yeah, you know, to incorporate that part of the rail trail. Like I said, whether or not you do solar or not, I think there's plenty of room. Even if solar doesn't come through, you could still probably sell off a house lot and still have plenty of room for the rail trail and some other activities back there ever. So that's just one point. Another point I'd like to just say is bring up is we're winding down the museum, so if anybody's interested in coming to see what we have, we're going to be probably closing up by the end of November, and then afterwards, it'll be just by appointment. So, and then, if anybody's interested, I suggest you come down, because we're a year-by-year thing. We never know if we're going to be there the next year. You know, the building's for sale. Who knows what's going to happen?
Now, is that space, do you have to pay for that space, or is that being donated to us somehow?
Well, we pay for expenses.
Okay.
You know, insurance and money towards utilities and such. But, yeah, so basically, it's, we're getting a good deal right now, so.
What are your fall hours?
They're posted on our website. The next fall, next hours will be this Saturday, 10 to 1:00, and then I believe the following Wednesday, 3 to 5:00, and then skipping that Saturday and then following Saturday. Our hours are posted on our website, and we have a couple posters around town and such.
Yeah, I'd encourage anybody that's interested in town, in North Brookfield's history, to go down there. There's a lot of really neat stuff in there, and there's some great displays, so.
Yeah, a lot of displays, but also we have a lot of information, binders and stuff. If you're doing research, a lot of photos and things, you know. And, so, yeah, we encourage you to come down, be interested before the end of November. And one question I have for you guys is, what's happening with Bates Observatory? Or is there an idea to try to preserve that? Do you think the money might be there?
I just got a thing from Mr. Potvin.
Yeah, he called me, too.
He's coming up with a proposal to get it repaired. He's got a whole list of things. I think he's going to come to one of the meetings. I don't know if it'll be
On the 30th.
Yeah.
He's coming on the 30th.
Yeah.
Isn't there like $90,000 on the down?
But he wants to do it with private funds, because that's repair money, I guess. The $90,000 was put aside for Yes, it is.
Repair and upkeep, yeah.
But if he can get it funded privately with donation, we'll still have the repair money to keep it up in the future. He's talking about getting it fully rebuilt.
Yeah, because I know there's some interest from a couple people in the water department working with the stone people down here on East Brookfield.
Yeah, I've talked to Ken Eurasius a couple of times over the past years, and every time we start talking in the spring, he's like all over the world repairing stuff, because he makes historical bricks. So, you know, he was supposed to send one of his supervisors over to meet with Richie Kennon and look at it and develop a plan, and I haven't seen a plan come out of it. So I don't know if the meeting happened or not happened, but we're interested in repairing it. There's a number of people that are interested, just getting everybody on the same page, I think.
I just wondered, because I, like I said, I talked to Bob, and
He dropped stuff off at my house this afternoon. He's got a package, and he's hot for this thing.
Yeah, I know. We kind of worked on it years ago, and it kind of fell through, just because the estimates were so high and trying to get anything done, and the money just wasn't there. So I don't want to, you know, like, get together with him without knowing what you guys' intentions were, you know, what's going on.
He's on his way to a meeting here, so, in the next couple of weeks, and he'll bring his package, and I, for one, will fully support it as much as I can.
Yeah, I think we've been interested in restoring that somehow, getting it, because it's fallen apart.
Right.
So we either have to restore it or take it down. Something has to be done with it. So we're interested in restoring it if we can.
I think at this point, it's pretty much a rebuild, but you really have to, you know, get an engineer in there.
I've been up there. It can be repaired. You have a good mason up there. Some of it's got to be taken down and then
Interior?
Like you would, I've been inside, but
You've been, oh, you haven't been inside?
No, no.
Yeah, I've been inside. It needs some work inside. It's going to need structural support from the inside, but
I mean, years ago, even years ago, inside bricks were blowing out and stuff, so I don't know. I mean, you know, maybe you got different ways to go with that, but anyway, I was just curious where you guys were on that point, so thanks.
All right.
I had one complaint about the cemetery on Walnut Grove Cemetery last week. I was down there myself, and Kai came up and complained about the condition of the cemetery, because the grass is a foot high down there, so I don't know.
We have an article on town meeting to buy a new mower, so maybe their mower's not working or something. Did you give him Kirk's phone number or an email? Kirk's very, he's very responsive.
Yeah. Was that what that was for, the transfer in cemetery was for a mower?
Yes, that's for
I don't know, but this guy was pretty livid that, you know, his family is down there, my family's down there, and I noticed it when I first went in, that, you know, the grass is this high.
My understanding is that we only have one person that takes care of both cemeteries, right? Yeah.
And they don't get a lot of hours.
No, and they, 10, 12 hours a week. It's not like he works a lot, so.
Well, we'll have to address it somehow, but
No, Kirk's very good.
I asked him to come to the meeting, but he didn't, so I'll bring it up.
All right. Any, anything else from public comment? Nope, we're good? All right, we're moving on to announcements. Chase, you want to read the
Sure. Early voting schedule for North Brookfield for the November 6, 2018 state election. Town Clerk's Office, 215 North Main Street. Office hours are Tuesday and Thursday from 12 noon to 3 p.m. Tuesday evening, 5 to 8 p.m. Early voting on Tuesday, October 23, from 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. And 5 to 8 p.m. Thursday, October 25, from 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. Saturday, October 27, from 9 a.m. to 12 noon. Tuesday, October 30, 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. And then 5 to 8 p.m. Thursday, November 1, 9 a.m. to 3 p.m.
All right. Read the hydrant flushing.
The North Brookfield Water Department will be flushing water mains throughout town beginning Tuesday, October 9, 2018, through Friday, October 26, 2018. The purpose of the flushing is to remove sediment buildup in the mains. The flushing may result in temporary discoloration of the water caused by small particles dislodging during the flushing. This discoloration might stain your laundry, especially white materials. Flushing is performed between the hours of 7:30 a.m. and 3:30 p.m. We post our daily flushing schedule on the North Brookfield Water Department Facebook page. If you would like additional information, please call the water department at 508-867-0207.
And the last announcement is a change in the sewer department policy. The sewer department wants everybody to know that on September 12, 2018, the sewer commissioners voted 3 to 0 to eliminate all abatements derived from privately-owned outside-water meter usage. Effective September 12, all users will be billed 100% of water use according to town-owned meter readings provided by the North Brookfield Water Department. If you have any questions or concerns, you can contact one of the sewer commissioners or the sewer departments. Anything else? You got anything, Joe?
Future agenda item.
Yep.
We have to perambulate.
We do? Was that every four years?
I think five.
I thought it was five.
Five years? And we're at the five-year?
We're probably at like six or seven.